Good evening and welcome to the June 12, 2025, meeting of the Abington Township Board of Commissioners. May I have a roll call, please?
Commissioners Brodsky?
Here.
Rothman?
Here.
De Placido? Lady Martin?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Weingrad?
Here.
Henry?
Here.
Subom?
Here.
Young Gertz?
Here.
Spiegelman?
Here.
Bowles? Schreiber?
Here.
Bowman?
Here.
Vice President Behe?
Here.
President Hecker?
Here. Thank you. Please note that Commissioner De Placido is excused this evening. May we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we get to the main agenda this evening, I have one announcement. The Board of Commissioners held an executive session earlier this evening for the purposes of talking about a personnel matter and real estate issues. Secondly, tonight, we have the pleasure of having a recent retiree join us this evening to be acknowledged for his incredible career and service and dedication on behalf of the township. So I'm going to come down and I'm going to make you uncomfortable, Tim, by saying nice things about you for the next couple of minutes. Okay. I mean, your son can take it for you if you don't want to do it. That's fine. Thank you for coming out. I know this is not exactly your cup of tea, but we would have been remiss if we didn't take the occasion to thank you publicly for a career that was just full of distinction, service, leadership, dedication to the township and the community. And I can speak on behalf of my fellow commissioners. You were around for 34 years. So we don't often get a chance to salute folks who have basically given all of their adult lives to the township, but you are definitely one of them. And you had the patience of a saint because as each of us were new and rotating on the board and wanting to save the world and filled with a billion different ideas about how we were going to change the community, you never made fun of us. I mean, you're like, yeah, Commissioner, yeah, Commissioner, good, yeah. And you just were there and you let us think the ideas. And when we realized that we couldn't do it that way, you never said, I told you so. You said, all right, this is what we'll do. And we did it and we got it done. So, Tim, you've been a friend. You have been an incredible mentor to people throughout your time here. And you've just been an incredible asset to the community. We are grateful for your 34 years of service. We are thankful that you're remaining here. And we just, we want to say, say thank you for a job well done. And we wish you everything in retirement. I have a citation and I'd like to read it to you. And then, then you could say, make a few remarks. So ladies and gentlemen, whereas Timothy G. Clark has been an employee with Abington Township for 34 years, and whereas Mr. Clark has contributed significantly to the operations and success of the engineering department and the construction management team as Director of Engineering, leaving a lasting legacy on the township and the community. And whereas Mr. Clark consistently demonstrated dedication, professionalism, and an unwavering commitment to serving the residents and improving the quality of life in the township of Abington. And whereas Mr. Clark's knowledge, leadership, and friendly demeanor have made him a valued colleague and a trusted resource to both staff and the community. And whereas the time has come for Mr. Clark to retire from his position and embark in a new chapter of life filled with well-earned rest, travel, hobbies, and time with family and friends. Now therefore be it proclaimed, this 12th day of June 2025, that Timothy G. Clark be remembered for his dedication to serving all people of the township of Abington, for his numerous achievements, and is herewith recognized by this formal expression of gratitude and with thanks and appreciation by the Township Board of Commissioners and the manager of the township of Abington. Congratulations and thank you, Tim.
No, good, this is brief.
Okay.
I always said I came quietly, I'm leaving quietly. Well, I didn't get away with it. No, I appreciate this. In the 34 years, I always enjoyed coming to work. And thank you.
Tim, you're welcome to stay for the next two and a half hours if you'd like. Understood. Yeah, you can watch it afterward. Thank you, Tim. Thank you. We'll give it a minute. Tim knows how to enter and exit a building. That's very cool. Okay. Thank you for that brief indulgence. Tim is a wonderful person and glad to see him being able to enjoy retirement. So tonight, before we move on to the voting items, we have a presentation tonight from the Environmental Advisory Council. They're going to give us a brief annual report update. And Karen McGary Rosen is joining us tonight to do that. Good evening, Karen.
Good evening. Okay, so I was told multiple times to be under 10 minutes. I don't think it's going to take that long.
Okay.
So the EAC is comprised of seven volunteers. This is what our appointments were in 2023. You see somewhere it's half and half because we had some movement in 2023 with a couple of members. And then associate members are our non-voting members. The purpose is to advise the township, promote education about management, use, conservation, natural resources. We work with staff, other township communities, collaborate with environmental organizations, participate in a statewide EAC network. Our logo is We Help Abington Go Green. Honors, we were honored by the NAACP for our work in October of 2024. Some of the accomplishments, we break down into four categories. The energy and climate sustainability. We have the water management resource protection and then public education, the biggest being public education. So some of the key things that we did in 2024 in regards to energy and climate and sustainability was assisting the township in obtaining grants and the economically favorable natural gas and electric suppliers and working with SEPTA and the Shade Tree Commission regarding the slope stabilization project in Ward 10? I think it was 10. And replanning, N5. We supported the Shade Tree Commission for the tree giveaway. And it's just a picture of someone taking home a tree through the sunroof. The compost initiative, we received a $7,500 grant from PA Department of Environmental Protection, DEP, to help us explore the feasibility of having a compost facility would be an optional thing to, for folks that are interested. It wouldn't be mandated, but we worked with Ashley and drafted some questions for a survey which came out in the beginning of 2025. As far as water quality, we work with the stream keepers at several Abington sites, do monitoring of salt levels. For resource protection, we do cleanups. We do a lot of cleanups around the township, Edge Hill Woods, Crosswicks. We do replantings at Hollow Well Park, maintain the riparian buffers, and collaborated in creating a meadow with Deal Park, which hasn't taken off of the ground yet. We did a creation of a native plant garden at Abington Library. That's the second one at that location. And we participated in the single, southeastern Pennsylvania Single Used Plastic Bag Coalition in addition to coming with a draft ordinance that was passed in the beginning of this year. We did two land development reviews jointly with the Shade Tree Commission and prepared comments to the planning commission. And lastly, we have public education where we do native plant sales. One was in April and another one in September. Public education, these are just some pictures from the Fall Fest where we did a recycle game. We were also at the Pre-Died Out, which I know some of the commissioners came to our booth and played our recycling game. We don't have any pictures, but we were there. And you know who you were, whether you got those questions correct or not. But we do monthly bird walks and we have on the website the locations. They alternate between Larmor Park and on Welsh Road. And we support the township electronic recycling and paper shredding events by collecting food for local food cupboards. And we collected approximately 1,602 pounds of food and $2,915 in cash and gift cards to Family Promise. So we distribute information into township, social media newsletters, township newsletters throughout the year, including articles such as stormwater, salt, reducing lawn, healthy lawn and yard practices, recycling tips. Here's where you can sign up for our newsletter, Facebook, Instagram, and follow us on X. And some of our goals for this year, which we, one of them we've already met, was to pass the plastic bag ordinance pass, improve our community's health and environment, complete the climate action plan, incorporate electric vehicles in the township vehicle replacement plan, as well as some others. And I guess that's it. That's the last slide. Does anybody have any questions?
Any comments or questions for Karen? I mean, other than saying thank you to you and your colleagues for your incredible dedication and, you know, community engagement throughout the year. You guys put a lot of time and energy into the work that you do and it shows.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Excellent. Okay, so we will move into the full agenda and we will start with public comment on items that the board will be voting on this evening. So please come forward, state your name, and you have three minutes.
Adele Cubell. Jefferson Hospital has created a lucrative income stream from food trucks. Jefferson owns their own food trucks. That means commissioners will vote 100% together for the food truck ordinance today. The control Abington Hospital has is destroying. Food trucks guarantee more plastic bottles, food wrappers, and plastic forks on the street. Will Abington Hospital be paying for desperately needed street department employees? We've been short since COVID. No, Abington Hospital blights the township at the invitation of commissioners. Code enforcement is prevented from doing their job. Invited VIPs utilize blight and long-term house fitters to force homeowners to move. The same dumpsters have remained open for four and a half years. More work for code enforcement means Bruce Goodman will never get the four open dumpsters at the Noble complex closed. Food trucks will benefit the hospital at the expense of the health of the citizens. Does the environmental council approve of open dumpsters and food trucks? This is something they should be working on, not me for four and a half years almost. Abington's faded unreadable street signs are a safety hazard. $19 million in COVID should be fixing that easily. Some of them are absolutely unreadable. Why is tax money being utilized to fix sidewalks on Eastern Road? These sidewalks belong to Wawa and Blight Creating property owners. New sidewalks go where tenement apartments will be built and there will be tenement apartments. That information came from Mrs. Henry.
Anyone else wish to speak? Please come forward.
Hi, I'm Joe Rooney. I live in Ardsley. Nice tie again. Seems like you're wearing it before. Just a quick question. Who has access to the flag displays on the podium? Is that everybody?
I put this out in front of my placard.
So can anybody, can anybody put them up?
No.
No one can?
Commissioners can put up what they want to put up. I put up a flag. If you don't like it, that's too bad.
Dennis, could I get a request for a pro lay flag?
No.
Up there?
Mr. Rooney?
I'll get one for you.
You should address your comments to me and please speak to what's on the agenda. You know there's another opportunity to talk later.
I know.
All right, well, let's get to it.
You know I knew that, too. So I'm going to ask about the Economic Development Corporation. I just took a look at the biographies.
Is that on the agenda for a vote tonight? I don't see it.
Economic Development Corporation?
Did I miss it? Oh, I did miss it. Okay. You're right. Please go ahead, the individuals. Yep. Go ahead.
You didn't know that?
No, I did. I just, I confused it with one of the other items. But yeah, no, I know.
Are you out of time?
You can get back to two minutes and 30 seconds. Let's get to it, Mr. Brenney.
Well, thank you for the interruption. So a question, I looked at Mr. Lehr's biography and Ms. Graziano's biography. And then I tried to figure out Mr. Brown's, Ms. Yornoff, and John Dean. So I guess the first question I would ask is, I think Ms. Yornoff is a lawyer. How many of the five people that are on the Economic Development Corporation now are lawyers? Does anybody know that? And it seems like they're all, everybody's active, high-powered Democrat lawyers at the same time. And I guess my question is, we had an economic development committee and we've changed that into an economic development corporation. And for Ward 9, or Ward 10, or Ward 5, how does a bunch of wealthy lawyers represent the people of Ardsley or Willow Grove or Roslin better than an economic development committee would? So how do you choose? And I'm not saying anything about any individual, but if you're looking at, and you're always preaching about diversity and inclusion and people have to look like somebody. And I realize that they should look like the people in Ardsley or in Willow Grove. And how do they represent the interests? I don't know how many lawyers. I know there's three of people in the whole township. How do you make that decision? And how can I expect to get better representation from wealthy Democrat lawyers on the Economic Development Corporation that I would have from residents of Abington Township? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else in the room wish to speak?
No answers.
If not, we will go to Zoom.
Laura Lehman, you're unmuted.
Laura Lehman, Meta Brook. So first of all, I can't believe that we still cannot get the Zoom link in a bullet point on the site. It makes it so difficult to tell somebody how to get in. And secondly, the Economic Development Corporation, I have the same concerns that Mr. Rooney has. The whole process there was absolutely bizarre and does not represent how a community is supposed to work. We, each ward has a commissioner. And your commissioner is supposed to be coordinating the things that their residents need and want in their community. Instead, we have our grants going out to people that we don't even know. We don't know, so some of them, one of them, for instance, is from Ward 1. Wonderful if she says what she would like to see in Ward 1. But in Ward 6 or 7, those people should have a say of what they'd like to see. And secondly, the Economic Development Corporation has not shown any economic development. There's, economic development implies that there will be an increase in the income from those areas. And it is absolutely crushing to see that we've spent well over $1 million, probably $1 million and a half or more in order to get to this point of nothing being done without any promise that what is done will show a return of any sort, either a price we pay for something we dearly love or money that is returned to us so we have to pay less. And that's what's a shame about this corporation. Secondly, you have an item on the agenda about the wastewater and radiation and an expired certificate in there. And I don't recall that coming to any other meeting. Mr. Hecker, can you tell me what other meeting that was presented at? Because we're not supposed to have things presented at the voting meeting and have a vote on it without any idea of what the heck you're doing. And especially when you're taking radiation here and there and somewhere else. So where was this presented before, Mr. Hecker?
Yeah, it's on the agenda tonight. It was not presented elsewhere.
Well, you shouldn't be voting on it tonight.
Okay, that's your perspective and you're entitled to it. Thank you.
Not a perspective. It is, it is the raw of this land, literally. And you made a whole big deal about changing around the committees till nobody knew what committee was what anymore. The same thing with the museum that had to go to the comprehensive plan consistently committee, but you didn't send it there. And when I showed the chart that it had to go there, poof, the chart got disappeared.
All right, Ms. Lehman, I'm going to need you to conclude your comments.
Okay, to conclude my comments, there is nothing in this township that should be voted on, on the first meeting that it's presented, without a place for residents to sit and then go research and learn about it and come back and tell you what they want done or not done. So I ask you to take that off the agenda tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe we have one other resident that wants to speak.
Marla Copan.
Yes, so I'm not sure. I apologize in advance.
That's okay.
I can't really see the agenda, so I'm not sure if this is the appropriate time to ask this question. But I had, it's a general question just about communication from the commissioners to residents in their wards. So should I ask something like that at a later time during the meeting?
You're all here now. Go ahead and ask your question. If we can't answer it now, we'll get you an answer.
Thank you. So my question is just, how do the commissioners communicate with the residents in their ward? So, and how do we hear, are we supposed to hear from them? Monthly, quarterly, or I just, I guess, yeah. So that's basically my question. How do we hear from our commissioners? And like, and do they give us updates as to what's going on in the township? Or, yeah.
Well, if you leave behind with Ms. McElvein your contact information, we will get you plugged into the 15 different ways that you can get updated on a monthly basis in terms of what's happening in the township. And then we can put you in contact with your commissioner as well. I don't know where you live. I'm not going to ask you for that information here, but we'll figure it out and help you get connected.
Okay, so no, I do receive information from the township. I was specifically asking about, like, do the commissioners themselves, like, what's their job as far as communicating to residents in their ward?
Well, I don't, there isn't a specific job description. I mean, obviously, we are the policymaking body for the township. And as issues come forward, you know, we seek community input before deliberating and taking a final vote. And there's many opportunities for input in that regard. And I'd be happy to talk to you offline as well if you're looking for additional ways to connect with your commissioner or other people in the township.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you for, thank you for your question. And with that, we will move to the consent agenda and I will turn to Board Vice President Matt Behe.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for passage of the consent agenda listed as Items A through E. And I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda carries. We do not have any unfinished business. We are going to go right into new business and I will once again turn this back to Board Vice President Matt Behe.
First item of new business is BOC-06-061225, motion to hire the next three qualified candidates from the 2025 civil service eligibility list. And I so move.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Are there any comments or questions from members of the board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
Next item is BOC-07-061225, motion to reject all bids for the 2025 storm sewer inlets and manhole structures bid. And I so move.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions from members of the board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries.
Next item is BOC-08-061225, motion to reject all bids for the Abington Township Transfer Station bid and authorize rebidding of the project. And I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Comments or questions from members of the board?
Yes.
Yeah, Commissioner Bowman.
Mike, what's the, what's the status? So as we went out for bid and the bids came back, there were some fatal flaws. So we are asking the bids to be rejected. We are asking for authorization to rebid it, put it back out there. And the next item will give a little more clarity on what our next steps are.
Are we still packing trash there from smaller trucks on the bigger trucks?
We are still, yes. And that is, as we went out for bid, either direct haul and/or operating our transfer station the way it is now. And that's, that's where we've, we've managed to stabilize our refuse fees.
All right, thanks. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Next item is BOC-09-061225, consideration of a 90-day extension of the township's solid waste disposal services contract between Abington Township and Covanta Sustainable Solutions, LLC, now known as ReWorld Waste, Inc., at the same terms and conditions set forth therein. And so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries.
Next item is BOC-10-061225, motion to adopt Resolution Number 25-019, authorizing the township manager to execute the required additional surety bond by the PA DEP for the transfer station. And I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions from members of the board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Next item is BOC-11-061225, motion to approve natural lands proposal in the amount of $27,600 for the Abington Township invasive plant management plan. And I so move.
It's been moved. It's been moved and seconded twice. Any comments or questions from members of the board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries.
Last item of new business is BOC-12-061225, motion to appoint Jill Graziano and Gregory Lehr to the Economic Development Corporation to fill a term ending April 31, 2030. And I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions from members of the board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
And that concludes the new business this evening.
Thank you, Vice President Behe. We'll now turn to the Finance Committee and Finance Committee Chair, Commissioner Stuart Weingrad.
Thank you, President Hecker. The only item we have is FC-01-061225, motion to approve the April 2025 expenditures in the amount of $2,917,827.51 and salaries and wages in the amount of $2,423,433.93 and authorizing the proper officials to sign and approve invoices and supporting documentation and payment of bills and contracts as they mature through the month of July 2025. And I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. May we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioners Brodsky?
Yes.
Rothman?
Yes.
De Placido? Lady Martin?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Weingrad?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Subom? Young Gertz?
Yes.
Spiegelman?
Yes.
Bowles?
Schreiber? Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Vice President Behe?
Yes.
President Hecker?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
And that would conclude, conclude the Finance Committee agendas for this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Weinberg. And with that, we will open it up for public comment on general matters of township business. Please come forward, state your name, and you have three minutes.
Mr. Hecker, first of all, my name's Adele Kubel. Mr. Hecker, you regularly prove that the kings and queens are here. This is a billionaire-controlled dictatorship. I ask questions, none of them are answered. Nobody's questions are answered here. They're always answered somewhere off the record, who knows where. Ms. McElveiny stated that $12 million was going into parks and recreation. Why, then, is Briar Bush Center defunded? The new walkway to the Bird Observatory ends with the observation cabin being shut down. The cabin is closed due to tree and wind damage. The observation cabin was not maintained for years. Tree and wind damage was inevitable. Parks has $12 million. The Bird Observatory should be made operational immediately. This should not be another writing grant fundraising opportunity. The Butterfly House had six butterflies it opening. Butterflies have lives measured in days. Commissioners have no plans to purchase butterflies for replenishment. Only six butterflies in the entire house? No butterflies? No butterfly bushes or native plants are in the vicinity to lure butterflies to the area? The area is absolutely barren? The Butterfly House will close shortly. Six butterflies are not enough. The indoor bird exhibit and three aquariums are long gone. These areas always had crowds of weekend children visiting. Commissioners are against adopting animals and maintaining aquariums. No animals are being adopted. Don't laugh, it's true. Is $12 million going to biking infrastructure? There's a question for you. The tree canopy that was magical is damaged and needs rejuvenation badly. Nature books, manipulatives, puzzles, pillows are desperately needed at Briar Bush. Why do you begrudge children resources? Do the children of less wealthy families deserve less? $12 million in Briar Bush is getting no funding at all. Not funny, tragic. Briar Bush is the best of Abington. The Dede Long Nature Museum is moving toward empty, empty. Will it be closed down for tenement apartment buildings too? Ms. Schreiber and Mr. Spiegelman, your endorsements are examples of flagrant deception. Accessibility with nothing to access does not deserve a ribbon-cutting ceremony. Why is Briar Bush not getting any money?
That's just not true, but...
There's nothing there. I went there, six butterflies are not enough. The birdhouse is completely shut down. When will it be fixed? There's a question for you.
There it is. We'll get an answer. Thank you for your comments.
No, no, I never get the answer.
Yeah, I don't know the...
You're a liar, a flagrant liar.
Please take your seat.
You never answer one question, absolutely lies.
We'll get an answer to that question.
Never.
Take your seat, Ms. Kubel.
Get some manipulatives, buy some books, do something for kids. You're doing nothing.
Take a seat. Thank you.
Stop telling me to take a seat.
Okay, who else wishes to speak?
Good evening. Lisa Mallon from Meadowbrook, PA. Two years ago, because of ordinances from this commission, we battled, a big battle at 1209 Riddle Road. And then after that election was over two years ago, the commissioners did the right thing, and they changed the ordinance to prevent, you know, being able to build medical facility or whatever at 1209. I'm sure that we're, tax dollars are still paying solicitor fees fighting that issue, but that's neither here nor there. What I'm hearing now, though, is that Mr. Toll wants to build a museum on his property. Now, I'm not a lawyer, but I've read a lot, and if that property goes partially for a nonprofit, then he gets a tax reduction. So in the days where we're being taxed every year more by real estate property taxes, and now with the big, huge middle school tax increase, to take a property that's north of $130,000 a year in taxes and the potential of making that partially a nonprofit to get away from paying those taxes is just going to increase the burden on the rest of Abington. Plus, it adds, again, to a spot zoning issue where you open up a whole nother can of worms by allowing something that should not belong in an R1 residential district. So you, I wish that you would have learned from the 1209 Riddle Road experience, and hopefully, when this comes for a vote, you'll think about that and maybe vote against it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Pop Joznowski, 927 Irvin Road. Commissioners, I propose an alternate solution to the Toll Museum. The structure and the events that held at the Toll Museum would significantly impact the surrounding areas, particularly the increased traffic on Susquehanna and Meeting House. Historically, precedent shows that museums like the Barnes Museum had caused long-term problems for their respective areas, and when the owners of such museums pass away, their heirs lack any interest in the project and the community gets faced with challenges and future once the art sold off. There already is a viable solution, the Linwood Hall Preservation Foundation. This foundation is looking to restore Linwood Hall, which houses two large art galleries and boasts architectural magnificence unrivaled by the Toll Brother Museum. The restoration plan includes utilizing natural light tracked by the sun rather than electric dimmers. They plan to go geothermal heating. Additionally, they intend to revive the gardens and the grounds and include the copper, the Cooper Beach trees that are known for this area that all came from that property. They also aim to foster traditional trades. One of the requirements for anybody building the thing, they have to teach young people the old craftsman styles of the plastering, carpentry, gardening, and these are very diminishing skills as us older folks retire that have some of these skills. Many of these workers maintain all the old wood columns and woodwork on the grand old structures in the area. Our local trade school could collaborate with Linwood to teach them the old world skills. With Toll's funding, this first floor of Linwood could be restored promptly. Moreover, there's Elkins Hall right across the street that was recently renovated, and it's beautiful, and that could be used for dinner and venues and events and stuff like that, and it's a beautiful grandeur. Linwood can similarly be revitalized, drawing international attention to the community akin to the Biltmore Estate. A Toll museum in an R1 residential area would likely cause issues for decades similar to what happened to Lindenwood Castle in Amherst. The only solution left for Lindenwood was to destroy the grounds and construct McMansions all around it. The Toll museum will face limited uses when their heirs eventually sell off their art. Please visit the Linwood Preservation Foundation website for more information and video. This proposal presents a far more sustainable beneficial solution than a McMansion museum. Thanks for your consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room wish to speak? Please come forward.
Joe Rooney, again, thank you for the opportunity to talk again. First, I don't know if you and Matt missed your little red noses with your uniforms, but we can get those, and I think that that display...
Mr. Rooney, enough with the personal attacks.
That display is nothing more than a political...
It's not political at all, and if you want to get into an argument about that, that is fine.
No, I'm arguing, I'm talking, I'm an open commentator.
You're not, no, you opened with personal attacks on two people, and if that continues, I'm going to shut you down.
That's fine.
Just, you're on notice, Mr. Rooney.
I'm on notice.
Make your comments.
I get it, and you're on notice, too.
Of what?
First off, chief, with what we have seen on television recently, thank God for our wonderful police, and I hope everything stays calm, and thank you for all the great work, and everybody in Abington Township appreciates the great work you do. I'd like to extend that one step further and say God bless our customs and immigration officers with the horrible stuff that we have seen taking place. We want to let them know that the average person in every one of the wards in Abington Township appreciates the hard work they do to defend our country every single day, and God bless them for that. I'd also like to say, if you're an illegal alien and you're in Abington Township, you have to go home. There are wonderful ways to get into our country legally, and just look it up and figure it out, get in line like everybody else, and become a good American citizen. Next, it appears to me that the political flag you have flying is larger than the American flag that's out there. I would like to challenge Mr. Christman on that. I'd like it measured. That's in violation of the U.S. Flag Code. Also, along with your ties and with that flag, there's an awful lot of really important things that happen in America that Abington Township should recognize in the month of June. What do we have? Memorial Day just happened. There's plaques all over the place and our names of hundreds of Abington Township residents who we could spend a month talking about their biographies and acknowledging the sacrifice they made in World War I, World War II, going back to the revolution. There's VE Day, which just occurred, 80th anniversary of victory in Europe. D-Day, 81 years ago, occurred just a couple of days ago. They're all worthy of recognition. Oh, Father's Day is coming up and Flag Day this weekend. Maybe you could wear a red, white, and blue tie if you're interested in honoring and including everybody in the township. And then there's the 250th anniversary of the U.S. Army's founding in 1775, all worthy of recognition. So that covers that. This next one is really a quick question. Have we gotten any update on the tax implications of SPS shutting down? I don't know if there's an answer. And the last one is, we could use some relief. I don't know if Jankettown Road is a state road or if it's a county road or if it's a local road.
It's a state road.
But we need to get some work done on Jankettown Road.
Okay.
At least the Ardsley and Glenside part of it.
Okay.
Thank you.
It's a state road. It's a state road.
It's a state road. It's a five-year plan.
Yeah.
So we have three more years before PennDOT.
Okay. And they've done good work on Susquehanna Road leading up from where the Giant is. I want to compliment whoever worked on that. That's really a good job on that.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room wish to speak? Please come forward.
Good evening, Commissioners. Stephen Klein from Washington Lane. I think it's wonderful that the township raised the flag to celebrate acceptance and freedom in our country. This is such an important gesture for our township while we watch the proliferation of hate throughout our country. This flag not only celebrates the LGBTQ+ community, but provides a glimmer of hope to combat the hatred and intolerance that permeates our country, our neighbors, and obviously, in this room. Thank you and remain strong.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room wish to speak? And if not, we'll go to Zoom.
Ross Abel.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can hear you, Ross. Please, please proceed.
Okay, awesome. Good evening, all. My name's Ross Abel on Washington Lane with Jankettown, Abington Neighbors in Montgomery County. First, I wanted to check, this is probably a question for Ashley. What's the status on the Arleigh pedestrian improvements application and for the Evergreen and Jankettown Crossing? I wanted to check what specifically we're pursuing for this crossing.
You can, I mean...
So an update on the Arleigh application. We did hear back from PennDOT. They provided a few comments, but they, you know, didn't disqualify any of the locations that we identified, so we are going to proceed with an application. We're going to modify our application based off their feedback, and we're working on that now with our engineers to clean that up, and we'll submit that by June 30. In regards to the crosswalk that you just mentioned, it would be upgrading the ADA, well, I think there, there's no existing crosswalks. We would be putting in the high-visibility crosswalk. We would be having the pedestrian push-button flasher as well as any ADA ramps if they were needed at that location. I, I can't recall off the top of my head. And then I know you had asked about the access point, I believe it was, I think it's into the manner immediately across from there, but we did look into that, and that is open. It was closed for a period of time, but it is now open.
Okay, and is that, is that to, to the Art Center or specifically the entrance to Alverthorpe?
I think the closest location was to the Art Center, if my memory serves me correctly, but I did follow up with Parks on that and was advised that it is open now. It had been closed for a period of time. Is there a separate entrance that you were referring to?
Yeah, there's specifically, so there's the one right there that goes into the Art Center Trail, and then if you head off, I guess, to the south a little bit, towards, towards the little Meeting House, there's, there's an entrance to Alverthorpe's Trail that used to be open, but it's been closed for a long time.
I will follow up, Ross, and I, I will, I can, I can email you or I will...
Yeah.
That sounds good.
Thanks, Ashley.
Mr. President? If I could...
Yeah, go ahead.
I think, I think the problem has always been, like, I live by there, and I, we'd like to keep that open. Problem is, there's no one there to staff it.
Right.
So as you know, in Alverthorpe, you have to be an Abington resident to get in.
Yeah, yeah.
So I think that's really, that's been the problem. Sometimes it's been open, sometimes, I think Parks uses it or public work will use it to, to get their, their cars through, but otherwise, it's generally closed.
It's generally closed. Okay, well, that's something that we can...
But I can, I can follow up, Mr. Abel.
Okay. Go ahead, Ross, please continue.
Sure, thanks. What, well, what I would say is that please, please open up these pedestrian entrances to Alverthorpe. I, maybe I'm naive, but it seems so, so strange to me that we prevent our residents from being able to enjoy and easily enter Alverthorpe if they live immediately adjacent to the park. It's not normal for practically any other park in the area where, I know, I know that we restrict it to Abington residents, but like, we actually have Abington residents that live right next to this park, and you have to go all the way around to enter it. And giving our residents the ability to enjoy nature in this beautiful park is huge. Like, this is one of our best assets, and we don't let people easily access it. And if you look at our, our Parks and Open Space Plan, it outlines that we need to add additional entrances, and then the Abington-Jankettown Connections Plan has, I guess, I think it added the new, the new entrance along Fox Chase Road, which seems to be there, but it's also closed. And like, are we really expecting to have someone checking people at each of these entrances? I, I, my preference as a resident would be, let's just trust, because you can also enter at the main gate and just head right onto the trail and not get checked as a pedestrian. Let's just let our residents use their park.
Hold on, Ross.
Sure.
So that, you're on, on notice, Ms. Kubel. Any further outbursts and you'll be removed. He actually, if you look at the clock, he has a minute left. We've held the clock, and so you're...
I think we talk slow for him.
You know, there's just, there's just nothing I can say. Please continue, Ross.
Okay. So, yeah, I would say just please let us enjoy our park. Certainly, let's, let's pursue an ongoing active transportation strategy, whether part of the Parks Committee or otherwise. Let's, let's create a citizen and township-led traffic calming committee as cut-throughs and dangerous driver behavior are getting worse every day. Let's make mandatory traffic calming zones around our schools and make sure our kids can get to and from school safely without fearing for their lives. Thank you all for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Laura Lehman.
Laura Lehman, Meadowbrook. What Ms. Kubel might be upset about, among other things, Mr. Hecker, is that you have absolutely no problem answering questions for some people, as you just showed, and a tremendous amount of problem answering questions for others. And that is very contrary to what your job should be. The zoning hearing board, for days now, we have been trying to get some clarity here. We had somebody who came and literally just lied about the zoning, it appears. I have asked everybody to help in the same manner that you just helped, but we can't
but we can't seem to get a cogent reply on where the duplex zoning at the Crestmont Country Club might possibly have had an MSL zoning, when all the zoning I can find is R4. And I've certainly done my best to see if there's any other possible way that it could have been zoned. So, once we determined that and told the zoning solicitor, it literally was met with, oh, well, you know, no big deal. I don't see it that way. That's your opinion. The zoning on a lot is not my opinion. And all of you, all of the commissioners sitting there so quietly, should actually, somebody should actually, you, Mr. Hecker, or my commissioner, somebody should have contacted me, and we should get some resolution to this. The neighbors over there are flooding so badly, and these lots are on floodplains and being given ridiculous benefits to build on a floodplain, including building a duplex where only a single is allowed, including building six apartments that are not allowed to be built on a non-conforming foundation. So nobody did their homework, and it seems very purposeful. Mr. Klein is involved again, and that's the kind of thing that happened before with him. All of the officials who were supposed to be on the job, all of a sudden, weren't on the job. Everybody let him go. And this absolutely 100% is mind-boggling to watch the reaction of the township. And our manager, Mr. Christman, will not answer any questions. This is one of probably three dozen violations that have happened on his watch and on your watch, Commissioner Hecker, and on your watch, Commissioner Vahie.
Yeah.
And you have heard, too.
All right, Ms. Cubel, I'm going to ask you to wrap up. Your time is coming to an end.
I'm not, Ms. Cubel.
I'm sorry, Ms. Lehman.
Okay, and, but, but I would like to have an answer to when we are going to have a conversation about that. And I do want to say, to wrap up, Mr. Hecker, I do want to say that the zoning hearing board needs to have legislation that allows people to see what's being done before they get to a meeting. They don't even know what exhibits to bring or what's being done. We can't have them go cold into a meeting and then have the zoning passed, and it's all over. So how do we fix that? So I'm asking you to answer me the same way that you politely answered, Mr. Abel. I would like to have the same answer. This is important.
So I don't have an answer to it tonight. I will follow up with the manager, and we will get back to you.
When will you get back to me?
After I have a chance to speak to him, probably next week.
Well, next week may be too late, because this is supposed to be decided on Tuesday.
Well, I'll aim to get back to you by Monday. Thank you.
Would be the time that we need it.
Well, thank you for your comments. Okay. Ms. Cubel, that language is not appropriate to be burst out in the room, and so you know this, and...
I'm tired of you not answering one question.
And we're tired of you interrupting the meetings, and if this continues...
And workable works for developers. It can't be clearer than that.
Ms. Cubel? I'm not doing this with you. I'm telling you right now, if there's another outburst, you'll be asked to leave. All right, can we get the final resident on?
Our Wechterman?
Hello, good evening. Hello, Commissioners. My name is Rabbi Elise Wechterman. I live on Bacius Avenue, and this is my first commission meeting that I'm coming to. And I want to start by thanking you for all of the hard work you do for the people in this town.
Thank you.
I'm coming to you tonight because I'm sure you are aware of the increased ICE activity and the havoc that that is creating among the immigrant community of Montgomery County. I'm sure you know that 9% of the population of Abington is foreign-born. And these families, our neighbors, friends, and colleagues have a right to live in peace and safety with the guarantee of due process that is provided for all people in our Constitution. I know that you cannot prevent ICE from acting in this area. However, there are things that you can do within your jurisdiction, within the law, to help make our community a little bit safer and guarantee the prevention of going, the prevention of crossing due process. You can enact policies that prevent township employees, including our township police, who work so hard, from cooperating with ICE beyond what is required under a judicial warrant. You can also prevent the collection and sharing of information on residents' immigration status beyond what is necessary. In this past week, we have seen local officials in other towns, not here, but in other towns of Montgomery County, participate and, in at least one case, instigate ICE action against two Montgomery County residents. These two women have now been taken from their homes, we're not sure where, away from their children, to unknown locations without due process because of simple traffic stops. Now, I firmly believe that people who break the law and make mistakes be held accountable. But it is not the role of our township police and personnel to be the prosecutor, judge, and jury on immigration cases. And that is what happens when local police do not have the instructions they need to follow the guarantees of the Constitution and follow due process. I forwarded to my ward commissioner, and will be forwarding to the rest of you, sample policies drafted by the ACLU of Pennsylvania that work within the law and within your jurisdiction to help make Abington a safer place for our immigrant communities and prevent those things that happened elsewhere from happening here. Thank you for your time, and I look forward to speaking with you more about this.
Thank you for your comments this evening. Commissioner Bowman, you want to say something?
Yes.
Before we adjourn.
Maybe, I've been sick this week, but maybe I can answer maybe a couple of Ms. Cubel's issues. Sometimes you talk about the 611 traffic. We don't own that road. And when there's traffic issues in the township, we don't get them from individual citizens. We have a whole arm of the Police Department that studies things and brings them to our attention. Sometimes you mention the wooden window up at 611. I don't think there's any rule that you got to put a window in when it breaks. After all, a window is just wood that was removed. Now there's wood on it. I don't think we have any ordinance that requires a window. This isn't a conversation, man.
Yeah.
Please sit down.
No, no, no.
Please sit down.
Take your seat.
Please sit down, man.
It's the way that it is, so please take your seat. No, yes. No. Have a seat, Ms. Cubel.
I have a question.
Have a seat, Ms. Cubel.
I know.
No, no, no. Mr. Bowman, we're done.
There's a couple of answers for you.
Thank you. Ms. Cubel, take your seat. Take your seat. Take your seat, Ms. Cubel. Okay. Ms. Cubel? We're not doing this again. Okay. Okay, thank you. We are adjourned.